And I call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Dunwoody City Council to order. Uh, Councilman Hennigan, I believe, is online, but he is not doing the invocation because he is distant. Uh, Tom Lambert will lead us. Please rise.
Please rise. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I had to lift my chair up. I need every inch. Um, Chief Carlson, I believe you're next.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I bring uh before you today, uh, our officer of the quarter and our employee of the quarter uh of our second quarter. Uh, first like to um acknowledge Officer Jacory Edwards. Uh, he is the second quarter officer of the quarter uh this year. Uh, during the second quarter, Officer Jacory Edwards has gone above and beyond to assist with patrol coverage on his off days when sir uh when various team shifts have been shorthanded. Officer Edwards' willingness to assist has ensured the police department and the shifts have had adequate coverage in order to maintain our highest levels of public safety. In addition, Officer Edwards exemplifies outstanding work ethic by consistently performing at a high work level while being supportive of not only his unit but other units within the department by volunteering to help whenever he is needed. Uh, proactively participating in our social media con uh contributor team and various other tasks throughout the department. Uh, Officer Edwards' spirit of teamwork and dedication to the department has contributed towards our continued success in maintaining the outstanding culture we strive for as well as uh providing exceptional service to our citizens. And uh what's not on here is that he just recruited another officer that signed a conditional offer today, so. Okay, and uh uh I'm gonna go ahead and um uh talk about uh this gentleman to my right I've worked with for many, many years. Uh, I'm sure you recommend uh recognize his familiar face. Uh, he did retire from us as a police officer. Uh, but we created a new position as the Fleet Maintenance Quartering Court, excuse me, Coordinator. Uh, so Brian Tate, since returning to WPD in April twenty twenty four as our Fleet Maintenance Coordinator, JB Tate has excelled in his new role by displaying his outstanding organizational skills and vehicle knowledge to address fleet challenges. He has streamlined fleet management by coordinating a highly effective workflow to improve the process of purchasing vehicles, record-keeping, performing in-house maintenance to reduce costs, and establishing improved vendor uh resources that best meet the department's high standards and expectations. Additionally, JB's attention to detail has organized fleet records, disposed of surplus vehicles, supported officers with vehicle maintenance, and ordered necessary equipment and graphics for the new public safety ambassador vehicles that should be here at the end of the week. So hoping to get those on board. Uh, his efforts have significantly improved fleet efficiency, reduced downtime, and saved money resulting in his exceptional service and success as Fleet Maintenance Coordinator. So I present to you Officer Cory Edwards and Fleet Maintenance Coordinator Brian Tate as the employees of the second quarter.
Congratulations, Officer Edwards and former Officer Tate. We are very glad you're back. Um, we know that both of you are doing a yeoman's job along with all your colleagues in the Dunwoody Police Department for our community, and we are very grateful and appreciative. Um, and I know that even getting cars equipped right now is not easy or fast, and we um appreciate your creative solutions, so thank you. Um, before we start, Ginger, I just need to ha- or whoever's in the back room, we need to elevate Councilman Hennigan to a participant because on our screens, uh, there he is. Okay, hi, John. All right.
Hello.
That was easy. Okay. Next up is public comment. We will have thirty minutes. I'm not quite sure. I may have thirty minutes worth of cards here. Um, each person gets three minutes. Please introduce yourself. Um, and you'll have three minutes to speak. There's a timer um right there that'll run the clock for you. Um, Leonard Stinson.
Greetings, Mayor and Council. Um, my name is Leonard Stinson, uh, and I've been living in Lakeview Oaks for about nineteen years now, and on the seventeenth of this month, three trees fell from Brook Run Park. Uh, well, actually, two fell from Brook Run Park and hit, all fell into my yard, hitting a tree in my yard and knocking that tree down as well. So I contacted the city, of course, and they wanted, they came out, I think that Wednesday, and said they were gonna remove the trees and and do what needed to be done. However, they wanted me to sign a waiver on the saying that they're not liable for any damage to my home or to my property while they're removing these trees. I refused to sign. Once I refused to sign, of course, we had a long exchange, but the bottom line of what they left me with were three options. One, contact my own insurance and deal with what happens there. Two, uh, let them just cut the trees and and sign the waiver. And three was, they would turn it over to the city's insurance. Well, they did. They ended up doing that. Uh, they kind of made the choice for me. I s- I think later that day I got an email and the email just simply said, here's the adjuster for the city. Reach out to that person. Um, of which I have done, and I haven't heard anything back from it. My concerns here is, one, I just feel like I've been abandoned by the city. Uh, there, there, it's like they're really not doing anything on behalf of me, the taxpayer. Uh, two, I'm kind of a prisoner in my own home. I can't go outside in the backyard because I'm legally blind, and I can't go out there and walk in that backyard. I may get injured, may fall, hurt myself or whatever back there. So there's a, that, that's very unsettling. Then on top of that, my neighbor, one of the trees fell over into her yard as well, and it has bent her fence, and that fence is what keeps her, her dog in when the dog goes out to, you know, do whatever it does. And the fence is bent, so the dog can actually get out now. So she can't let the dog out uh by himself. So two questions I would like to leave with the council, the mayor and the council here today. One, um, is there anything that can be done to quickly rectify this situation? Because that insurance company can be weeks, uh, and we're just left there just feeling like we're alone there. Second question is, on my street, all of the houses on my immediate street are backed up to Brook Run Park. So two trees have already fallen, so I'm concerned that all the trees will fall.
Thank you, sir.
And who's coming out to do something about that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Frank Lockridge. Approach the microphone and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, my name is Frank Lockridge, and I'm a thirty-plus-year resident of Dunwoody. I'm here tonight to represent my, my neighborhood, the Lakeview Oaks Homeowners Association, and the sixty residents that live there. We do uh back up to Brook Run uh on the uh western boundary of Brook Run. So anything that happens in Brook Run is of utmost concern and importance to us. There are a number of large trees that border uh the, the neighborhood, and I do understand that we have an arborist, and I would certainly encourage the arborist to look at those trees and examine them to see their health and and do any of them need to be taken down before another one falls. So I'm certainly asking your consideration to do that, your consideration for two of the neighbors, um, Leonard Stinson, who you just heard from, and Donna Hardesty is who is the lady that uh had the fence damaged in her yard. And I do appreciate your consideration this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Bob Hickey. You'll have three minutes, sir.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I am Bob Hickey, a citizen of Dunwoody for almost fifty years. I'm here tonight to request the council to defer a decision on action item number seven in tonight's agenda. This item was presented as a public hearing at the last council meeting two weeks ago. The public was provided totally inadequate notice of the public hearing. None of the neighbors in the Brook Farm subdivision that I've talked to, which is a neighborhood of two hundred and sixty-nine homes with over five hundred citizens, received any notice of the public hearing. The shopping centers affected by the proposed streetscape design standard are the lifeblood to many of us in the subdivision. Among the activities we do multiple times a week is buy groceries, get our prescriptions filled, get the gas for our vehicles, buy fast food, and go to church. We use these neighborhood stores, and we are concerned that the burdensome changes might affect the usability or increase the cost to the merchants doing business in the shopping center. Of course, any increase in their cost costs us more. I request the council to defer action on item number eight tonight until the proposal is fully completed by city staff and presented to citizens for vetting. By the way, while I have a minute left, I would also like to thank the mayor for having the city's outside auditor at tonight's meeting. As I stated at the last meeting, I only want to know why the city's two thousand and twenty-three general fund year-end unaudited statement of revenue and expenses had a surplus of one million, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, while the audited same fund for the same period of time had a deficit of one million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. All I want, okay, is just a simple explanation in layman's terms why there's a difference of point, three-point-one million dollars in the same financial statements. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Marcarley. You'll approach, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As to your item seven tonight, I hope you will defer until you, until the nearby neighbors have a chance to understand the significance of the proposed sidewalks and et cetera. There's not much foot traffic on the sidewalks on Jet Ferry or Dunwoody Club. The sidewalks there are, appear to be very attractive and adequate. Also, there are a number of old trees and vegetation there that any rebuild will destroy. We have excellent greenery along Jet Ferry and Dunwoody Club. As you know, we are in a nice residential community. We certainly do not need six, a six-foot sidewalk on the east side of Jet Ferry and a twelve-foot sidewalk on the west side. A twelve-foot sidewalk on the west side of Jet Ferry would disrupt several businesses and make the entrances to Jet Ferry more dangerous. And in fact, a twelve-foot sidewalk would probably eliminate Nail's vegetable market. I realize this would not happen unless there is a new development in those shopping centers, but you are preparing plans if the development occurs. Joe Secunder spoke at our annual share homeowners meeting, ninety-nine homes, on August fifteenth and told us about the Lido meeting, but nothing was mentioned about the city council plans for the triangle streets of Mount Vernon, Jet Ferry, and Dunwoody Club. Ask you again to please defer and give the nearby neighbors a chance to understand more about the effects of the proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Ogletree, you'll approach, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Beth Ogletree. I am a resident of Brook Farm subdivision, and I am currently serving as the president of the Brook Farm Dunwoody Close HOA, representing two hundred and sixty-eight homes in the immediate area of the roads and shopping centers being considered under agenda item number seven tonight. Our residents have a desire to be informed citizens. Unfortunately, our neighborhoods were not notified of the proposal for the change in streetscape design standards, and therefore, we have had no opportunity to understand the proposal. It is apparent that there are many questions and therefore many concerns about the proposal, whether it's the loss of mature trees, the effect on deceleration lanes, whether it's the proposal for twelve-foot paths on two sides of a street. More information is needed. I am requesting that the council defer making a decision on this item until further information can be obtained for citizenship for, so the citizens can be uh an informed community, uh, and you can optimize the citizen's support of what the city's trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali? Um, okay. I know you sit there, so it's like, where are you for me? Because I can't see behind the post. Go ahead. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, City Council. Uh, I wanted to talk to you today as custodians of our money about interest rates. So of course, you know, you guys are very familiar with a bunch of different things. I don't expect you to be masters of everything. I'm uh same thing as well. I'm not an economist. I'm simply coming to you as a citizen talking about interest rates. If there's an economist in the audience, I'd appreciate if they came and corrected any of the things that I would say that are wrong. I value their opinion far more than my Google search. But nevertheless, um, I want to talk about interest rates because it drives everything we do and everything to do with our money, right? So let's talk a little bit about how we got here. So the Federal Reserve waited way too long to raise interest rates. As a result, inflation kind of got out of control. So then they had to twenty-five basis point, twenty-five basis point, twenty-five basis point, rise it up in an exceedingly high speed, almost kind of, I think, like nineteen ninety-four was this somewhat kind of similar, not as bad. Well, when you talk about inflation and keeping inflation under control, you have two components. If you read some of the Federal Reserve dockets, one is going to be the supply of money through interest rates. The second one is going to be the unemployment number, again, supply of money through unemployment. The Fed's target, from my understanding, was to have a certain unemployment number by the end of twenty twenty-five. We are there now. So because of this, from my understanding, the general atmosphere is that we're going to have interest rates drop. Now, from what I understand, from the guestimates of different reports, in September, most likely a twenty-five basis point or even a fifty basis point drop. October, probably nothing. We get close to an election. Come January, February, we'll start seeing this. Regardless of which path you are or um how you feel about politics, from what I understand, regardless of whoever gets in office, interest rates are guesstimated to go down. One candidate gets in, they might go down a lot faster, a lot harder, but either candidate, the guesstimate is that they're supposed to go down. Again, not an economist. Nevertheless, the reason why I bring this to you again is you're the custodian of our monies. Thinking about bonds, thinking about further projects, thinking about vendors, thinking about the money that we have in our reserves. I didn't get a ch- it was my fault. I pulled the files way too late, or else I'd be able to talk to you a little bit about some CDs and some other investments that we have, rather treasury bills, CDs. Those are going to be coming due. City Council and the Finance Committee might want to consider holding on to them a little longer or going ahead and renewing for longer tenure or longer terms if those interest rates do as we all kind of predict and start dropping down. Again, just thinking about it, about the one million dollars, someone said something about a million bucks. You have two million dollars you put into a CD at four-point-five percent, that's ninety thousand dollars of interest in one year. If the rates drop to three percent, that's sixty thousand dollars. We could do a lot of good stuff with thirty thousand dollars. The point of what I'm saying today is I just wanted to put it in front of you that we should maybe be mindful of the potential direction of the interest rates as we take into consideration vendor contracts, interest, CDs, and potential other projects we want to do in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Tom Simon. You'll have three minutes, sir.
Tom Simon, resident of Dunwoody for forty-seven years. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I guess the best thing I'd say is ditto with the two gentlemen that women, that woman said. Uh, I just reiterate, please hold off on the vote with regard to the streets, street scape design. I've sent several emails that you all have gotten with regard to why hold off on the uh vote. I want to thank Tom Lambert for his email reply to mine. I appreciate that. And lastly, um, uh, I'm going to thank Joe Secunder for calling me Sunday morning, and we talked about various items, including this item. And a certain things came up that I just want to mention. Uh, one is with regard to this item, as I understand from what Joe said, uh, any changes with regard to this area, the Lido Triangle along Jet Ferry and so forth, would not take place in my lifetime or his lifetime. That's why, why vote on it now? Okay? And also, let's hope you and I, Joe, live long and fruitful lives. Uh, additionally, the uh item seven, as I mentioned, uh, there should be no reason to vote now if it's going to be after Joe and I are gone. So one last comment. I understand that uh Mr. Secunder met with the Homeowners Association, and he had to direct them through the website to find out exactly where they're needed. Therefore, I'm asking, whenever things like this come up, please be transparent in your communication. Give a one or two-page document that explains how to get, where to get, who to get, et cetera. Make it easier, because you all may know what the website is, where it is, what items are located and where they are. But we don't, because we aren't involved in the website on a daily, weekly basis. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. That concludes the cards I have. Anybody else have a card? Oh, if you, if, if you want to grab a card, we have some time left, right, Sharon? Okay. You can fill, this is, you can introduce yourself and then fill up, fill it out after. She's got to fill it out. Oh, she's already filled it out. Okay, gotcha. Um, you'll have three minutes. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yeah. Hey, everybody. Um, I'm Lauren Sock. Um, I have been a resident of Dunwoody for over ten years. Um, I own a business called Functionized Health and Physical Therapy right in the Dunwoody Village. Our main goal is to keep active people active in Dunwoody and our surrounding communities. I also founded a, a group called Active Dunwoody, which is to promote healthy and active lifestyles in Dunwoody through group events, running and walking events. But the most important thing with that is that we use our sidewalks, and so I'm here to talk about number, action number, item number seven. Um, and I think it's important to move forward with that because using the sidewalks, um, we know in Dunwoody, um, not all the sidewalks are uniform. Some of them are narrow, some of them are wider, and as somebody who uses those sidewalks within my group and myself personally, it's not safe having narrow sidewalks and having to go from a narrow sidewalk to a wider one and back and forth. Um, it's, it's hard to navigate. It's hard to, if I'm walking or running with multiple people, I have to kind of, we have to weave in and out of other people coming in the other direction, or as a runner, we often have to jump into the street to go around people that are already on the sidewalk. And I think it's just as a community, having wide sidewalks that take us to businesses such as the Jet Ferry Triangle, it brings community and it brings thriving people to the businesses, which is something I also do in my Active Dunwoody group. We go to different businesses and frequent them because we want the businesses in Dunwoody to thrive. Um, so being able to navigate those is really important and to be safe to where people can see us when we're coming, the cars can see us. Um, oftentimes, a lot of my friends were almost hit when we approached sidewalks and um roadways because we can't be seen. So the wider the sidewalk is, the more we can be in a group, people will see us versus being in tandem, um, in one in front of the other. Um, and, you know, the other thing to think about, and I know we've talked about, you know, us and um our aging population here in Dunwoody, but as a physical therapist, I know that bringing community is one of the biggest things that brings longevity to our lives and improves our health span. So if we can come together and frequent businesses, that creates a thriving community that will help us live longer. And having new sidewalks that are wider, we can see the sidewalk, we can prevent falls, and we also know falls are the biggest downfall of what takes us downhill in life and limits our age. So want, trying to be um mindful of having these sidewalks that are cohesive. And in Dunwoody, one of the things can people complain about is that we're not connected because sidewalks and areas don't look uniform. And if we can start to do that through this Jet Ferry um development area, I think that that would be really awesome um for a, as just as a whole, um, for our community. So um, I hope that we can move forward with that and that everybody can kind of see the pros and cons, but I think it's a win-win um for the community and for the people that are frequenting the businesses and churches.
I think that's, uh, uh, come on up, Melanie. Uh, we have time, Sharon? How much time is left? Oh, wow, people were talk fast. Okay, man. Okay.
I'm sorry, I just feel compelled to speak.
Okay, that's fine.
My name is Melanie Williams, and I'm a resident of Brook Farm, have lived in Dunwoody over forty-five years. Um, the goal of item number seven, as I read it when I did the research online with your website, which I, I found I had no trouble getting to the information. You just have to do it. You have to sit down and study it. The goal was to improve the safety of the pedestrians and the bicyclists of Dunwoody. It also aims to help reduce some of the automobile traffic in Dunwoody. And I realize it's not going to happen immediately, but we have to have the vision to look forward to see what we can make our Dunwood, how we can enhance the lifestyle environment of Dunwoody. Um, I studied the plans for the triangle in depth, and I think it looks beautiful. Um, I really feel like it would enhance that eastern entry into Dunwoody going towards Stowody Village, and it really would beautify the area, which now looks a little shabby, frankly. Um, I think it would also encourage businesses to invest in businesses in the shopping center that is almost empty now. Um, and I think it would ha- enhance all three of the shopping centers in that area. So um, I would just like to encourage us to really consider this plan and approve it. Um, I think time is of the essence, as it is. It will be years and years before it's ever implemented, and if we don't start now, when will we improve that end of Dunwoody? Um, we took a ride into, uh, up to Georgetown a few minutes ago just to look again at the work that's been done there. And there is a hundred percent improvement to the um appeal and the character of Dunwoody coming into the city from that direction, and I'd love to see that happen on the east side of Dunwoody where we live. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. Sorry. I had a technical problem there. I can't see it. All right. Um. Oh, hand up. Do we have time left? Uh, I'm sorry, is there, was the clock running? Okay, all right. Come on up, introduce yourself. You'll need to fill out a card, sir, after. Yeah, that's fine. Just introduce yourself.
Uh, hi there. My name is Sam Shapiro. Uh, I am resident for five years, and I also live in the Brook Farm Development. Um, I am very excited when I heard about this project you all are working on, um, and hope that you guys do vote on it today. I do believe this will happen in my lifetime, and I appreciate you all for all the hard work that you do. Um, and I just wanted to put that information out there that there are people who live in the Brook Farm area um that do very much look forward to something like this right outside our door. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is that the end of, is that it? If you'll just fill out a curse cards or and bring it up here, that's perfect. All right. Seeing no other public comment. I don't have a person, but I'm guessing it's you, Richard, that's going to introduce the next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I'm going to ask IT to pull up the presentation I sent them earlier today. So we have our external auditor for Malden Jenkins here. Josh Carroll is the partner on the engagement. He has, he's been with Malden Jenkins for eighteen years, has a wealth of experience and information and knowledge. So we very much enjoy working with him. I'm going to turn it over to Josh now and he's going to walk through a very brief presentation he has about the external audit. So.
Yeah, all right. Thank you for the introduction, Richard and Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. As Richard said, I'm a partner with Malden and Jenkins, ultimately responsible for the city's audit. And I'm here to present the results of the twelve thirty one twenty twenty three audit. Yep, how's that? Okay. There we go. Sorry. Ah, there it goes. Okay, so this slide, little bit about Malden and Jenkins. We've been around over a hundred years now. We invest a lot of time and energy in state and local government audits. I spend my entire year doing counties and cities and state agencies and development authorities. We have a bunch of partners that sit on boards and standard setting bodies to improve local government audits. I don't do any tax work. I best vest my entire year in state and local government audits. I mean, so does everyone that worked on the city's audit. Governmental audits are about thirty percent of our firm's overall practice and we do about seven hundred and fifty municipal audits annually. The statements are the responsibility of the city's management. Our objective is your external auditors express an opinion. We follow the generally accepted auditing standards, the government auditing standards, and we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion, which is what you'd hope to get. So as far as we're concerned, the statements are materially correct. We also issue a report on compliance and control. We come in and we look at how you receipt cash, how you disperse cash, how you onboard an employee, how you process payroll, how you terminate an employee. Look at PO transactions and we walk through all the, basically all the cycles of the city. We look at your internal control structure and we issue an opinion there as well and you have a clean opinion there also. We also look at your federal grants. We got a lot of COVID money the last few years and we've been spending that the last three, four years. We look at the compliance supplement, the grant agreement. We look at a sample of expenditures that you spent it on, make sure that those are allowable costs. We look at the reporting requirements and you have a clean opinion there. So those funds are being administered appropriately. It's kind of good to see because huge federal grants have not been the norm for the city with the influx of COVID money on the city has administered and kind of handled those funds very well. This slide, if I was on council, I'd want to know, do we have anything unusual or aggressive in our accounting policies? Are your estimates, you don't, your accounting policies are disclosed in the notes to your financial statements? They're very similar to all your neighbors in metro Atlanta. We did implement Gatsby ninety six this year. It deals with subscription based IT arrangements, which is a fancy word for us paying long term contracts to use other people's IT infrastructure. We booked an asset and an offsetting liability. They're kind of just going to amortize down over the life of those agreements. It wasn't a significant number. I think it was two or three hundred thousand for the city, but we did implement that this year. And you don't have any really big estimates. Your only estimate in your statements is really your useful life or your capital assets, which is how long do we think this building is going to last and how long is the VHO going to last us? And those those useful lives are reasonable as far as we're concerned. Sorry, I'm having trouble with the buttons here. This slide, we have a good relationship with management. The audit just kind of goes how it's supposed to go. We come in, we ask for a lot of information, not only from the finance office, but every department, we visit all of them and nothing seems hidden or covered up. So we appreciate the city partnering with us to get the audit done. It definitely takes both sides of the coin to get the audit done. It's a big process and we really appreciate the city working with us to get the audit done. This slide, we didn't have any audit adjustments, meaning we get the trial balance from finance. We do our thing, we do our audit procedures and we didn't have any journal entries to post, no adjustments. So hats off to Richard and his team. The trial balance received was clean and certainly not the norm in local government. So you have a really good finance team. We appreciate them working hard to give us a clean trial balance to audit. The next slide is, this is my one financial trend. This is your general fund, which is your main operating fund of the city. This shows your fund balance as a percentage of your annual expenditures. The GFOA is a standard setting body for local government. They recommend a minimum of two to three months and the city is at eighty four percent. Two, three months is sixteen to twenty five percent. You're at eighty four percent, which is nine, ten months. So overall, you have a healthy fund balance and the big ticks up and down in the five year slides here, it's mostly COVID money. We got a lot of COVID money and we use that to supplement some capital costs or some operating costs, mainly probably public safety payroll. Those were allowable expenditures. That's what a lot of local governments chose to spend that money on. It's appropriate. So those are kind of the big ticks. We kind of had some free money that we didn't have some operating costs and we kind of turned it that back down. As those, twenty twenty was the cares and twenty twenty two was ARPA. So we kind of flattened back out to seventy five, eighty percent there. So overall, it's healthy fund balance. We did have one comment. We don't have any findings. Findings make it into the audit report. Management comments are things we come across in our audit. They're just, and FYI, I want to let you know, we did notice that the city books a liability for compensated absences, which is paid time off and sick leave. And we didn't include the FICA component of that. And that is required to be included in that liability. It's not a huge number, so we just kind of recommend maybe just book that going forward. I mean, I've talked to Richard, I think they've already made that change. So I think this will go away next year. And then we are a full service CPA firm. We have a government advisory service group. It's been around two or three years now at the firm. They do a lot of niche projects for local government. They work, they work on a lot of transactional based projects. They're specific to your particular entity. They look at kind of operating efficiencies. How are we operating and using our resources and delivering the services to our residents? What are we doing well? How's it compared with our long term comprehensive plan? And maybe just some best practices. So if that's something council is ever interested in more about, I'd be happy to kind of set up a quick meeting or have the partner that heads that up come and tell you guys more about it. And we also offer a cybersecurity solutions. It's deals mainly kind of a gap analysis. We have a lot of customer information or citizen information and how are we, you know, protecting that information? How could it potentially be exposed and what are we doing to protect it? They do a lot of penetration testing, little specific engagements to make sure we're protecting our data. No one's too big or too small. Multiple clients have issues with this and so no one's too big or too small. But those are services we offer outside of the traditional audit. If the council is ever interested, we'd love to tell you more about it. Gatsby is always busy. We implemented Gatsby ninety six, like I said. Previous year, we have the Gatsby eighty seven. Those are two major accounting standards. The new standards are kind of quiet the next couple of years. So Richard and his team are going to get a break from implementing those new standards. There's a couple ones here. They're not significant, but we will implement them, but I don't think they'll end up going into your financial statement. So nothing new on the horizon in the next couple of years. And we do continue to provide free CPE to all of our clients. Richard and his team attend those. We appreciate them attending. Anyone at the city is welcome to attend. They are heavy governmental accounting base, but if anyone wants to learn more about governmental accounting, I'd be happy to get you signed up. And that's it. Like I said, it was a clean audit. You have a clean opinion. And we really appreciate the city, you know, partnering with us to get the audit done. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, great. Questions? John, nothing? Okay.
No questions.
Questions, okay. Wait, I think you said no questions, right? Tom, did you want to go?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just have a, just one question because a lot of times when we talk in financial terms and stuff, you know, to the layman, it's it's sometimes difficult to understand. So one of the objectives when you're talking about the review is reasonable assurance that the basic financial statements are free from material misstatement. Could you just explain that a little, go a little bit more depth about that as far as how you apply that to the audit of the city?
Sure. Yeah, so we do issue an opinion. It's in the very front of the financial statements and it says almost what you just quoted that is, in our opinion, the statements are materially correct. You know, we, we can't give absolute assurance because we do use our methodology and we do sampling of transactions. We can't look at every transaction that flows through the city or we'd be here for a long time and it would probably be not cost beneficial to you. So we do issue an opinion that, based on our procedures and the audit methodology and following all the standards, that the statements are materially correct and there are no material errors, in our opinion. Yeah.
I have a question. Oh, Joe. No, I'll go. I'll go if that's okay. So we have had some citizens who have been asking questions about adjusting entries in the, in the budget or in the accounting that are done during the process. Is it not true that these fall in two categories? Invoices that are late and booking of assets like pipes, for example?
Yes, ma'am. So they are, they are basically accrual entries. The statements are reported on a cruel basis of accounting, which is required by US GAAP. And oftentimes, we have services that happen in December and those invoices may not come in until January or February. And so we cannot book them until those invoices come in. But I also said, there's a distinction between audit entries and just the finance group closing out the books. An audit entry would be, we get the trial balance from Richard and we find something that they missed. And you don't have any of those. So I think there's a distinction there as well.
Okay, so as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, if a vendor bills us in March, say, for services delivered in December, you know, they get it, whatever, I don't. And our staff has to notify you, right? Because the year, is that correct or am I misunderstanding?
They don't necessarily have to notify us, but they do have to record it in the financial statements.
And it goes in the year before because it came, if the expense was in December, say, twenty two and the bill comes in February or March of twenty three, they record it as December twenty two, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Joe?
Hi, Josh. Thank you for what you do. I'm just curious, you had one of your side comments just kind of rolled off the cuff about, you know, you see that we are standing pretty good. But you said you mentioned likes on a side that you see a lot of other places that don't look so good. So, or something that that may not be as, I may be paraphrasing, right, I see here. But what I wanted to say is like, where do we stand against our peers in municipalities of Georgia? So I don't know how many other cities you audit in Georgia. You don't need to name names, but are we at the top? Are we in the top tier of, of, of getting a third party independent audit in the cities of Georgia, in your opinion?
That is a hard question to issue an opinion on, but I will say, I mean, you know, the fund balance slide, I kind of said that's the most important financial slide. And the GFOA is the standard setting body for local governments and they recommend two to three months at a minimum to having your fund balance and you guys are at nine or ten. So that, that's very healthy, very strong and you don't have any audit adjustments. You have a clean opinion. So, and I don't, I have them, but I have lots of clients that don't. We make a lot of audit adjustments. They have a lot of errors. So I would say you have very clean financials. The audit goes very smoothly. It goes how it's supposed to go and you have healthy fund balance in your general fund.
Thanks, Josh. I just wanted you, reassure you, and I really appreciate that. Thank you, thank you for saying that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want to say a shout out to Richard and his staff. We have a clean audit. We had no adjustments. We had one recommendation that's already been taken care of. We have a fabulous financial staff and thank you to, and kudos to Richard.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much for your time, sir.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Never hesitate to reach out if you need us. All right, consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, excuse me? The agenda for this evening for number two says that it's a presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty three annual comprehensive financial report. We've just been briefed on the audit, but we have not been briefed on the financial report. Can I get that financial report information, please?
Is this a typo? Wait, hold on. It was in, it was an attachment?
Yes, it was an attachment to the agenda item.
That's, that's what it was called. Yeah.
And it was attached. Are we not being briefed on it?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Jay.
This will help a little bit. The common colloquial term for what is now called the ACFR, the ACFR, is called the audit by most people. So they are the same document, if that helps.
Okay.
I have some questions based on the attachment that was provided to council review.
Okay. Eric, can you get someone up to answer those questions and we'll see if we can get answers?
Richard, are you prepared?
Not, John, we'll get the answers.
Thank you, Richard. Looking through the report, there's a mention of SPOST in twenty twenty three, SPOST was about nine million dollars. There was an election in SPOST one, SPOST two. There's a difference between SPOST one and SPOST two. Can you tell me, I believe it has something to do with capital improvements and what we're allowed to use that for?
Not quite right. I can answer because I negotiated all that, if that's okay. John, is it okay if I?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm trying to understand it. I want to make.
The big difference was, is that we got rid of what Fran Mallar called it baby SPOST because he didn't trust DeKalb County, which limited the uses. But also allowed, I believe, I might get the percentage wrong, ten percent for maintenance. Is that right? Jay's coming up because I might get it wrong. And the second SPOST, now we have the same SPOST as every other county with the same restrictions. Go ahead.
You're correct on that.
Right.
You tell me how the SPOST two then covers parks. SPOST one didn't allow funding for parks. But SPOST two does. What's the difference and how does that work? I just want to make sure this report is correct and because I'm trying to figure it all out.
Yeah, you're correct in that SPOST two or DeKalb second SPOST allows for the construction of new parks or new park equipment.
But we didn't put any money. When we, when we published our SPOST list, we included very little money for parks, if I remember correctly.
Correct. It was about one point seven percent.
Right, one point seven percent.
And are we allowed to change that percentage moving forward?
No, we are not. We're locked into what was approved in the resolution.
All right. And then I have another question. On page twelve of the report, there's a item that says cost of government. In the report, it states that the cost of government, the operating millage rate cap of three point zero four mils is statutory set and cannot be changed without a referendum. As part of the financial strategic plan, the government is committed to a consistent millage rate for property taxes to facilitate the provision of city services. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that we're being factual in our reporting. That's on page twelve.
I can't find it. Hold on. Sorry, John. Oh. Okay, so I was in the wrong.
PDF page thirty one, if you use a search for that.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you. So what's your question?
I'm trying to understand. I want to make sure it's factual. We're being factual in our report that the millage rate has to go in front of the electorate for a referendum in order to raise, raise the millage rate.
That, that is not correct, John. What is, I think your original question, and I'm, I'm not a CPA, is the current stance of the city is stated in this document that that does not bind future councils or mayors to not use the discretion it has under home rule or alternative levies.
Council, does this mean that this statement should be changed?
Let me interject right there. Part of the act first part is to put down what is in the charter. What the city attorney is referring to is an interpretation of using state law to change the charter. So it is factually correct is put in the act for right now.
So what you're saying is, is the act first says, this is what needs to be in this, somebody, some, right, with the charters, the guidance for preparing this report is that you include the language from the charter. And that's what this language is.
Correct.
All right, I have one more question. Thank you for clarifying. One more question, if I may. On page forty seven of the report, there's note sixteen, which goes into the land swap regarding Peachtree Charter Middle School football field or the feedback field. It shows that we have paid in advance of one point three million paying for the rental of that field into the future, up to the year twenty forty one. uh, paying for the rental of that field into the future up to the year 2041. I just want to make sure that 1.3 million that we're paid, we've already paid for is in that accounting. I want to understand how that does that number include also the lights that we already paid for? And does it also include the building that we've already paid for as well as the previous rental for the last eight years?
Is it? Is it real money?
I am unsure of that.
Can?
Plato is coming up. See if we can.
Yeah, it's on page 46 of that financial report.
Sure. So that's the future year. That 1.3 is the, if you notice down at the bottom there for each fiscal year ending, it's that total for each of the fiscal year out years is 1.3. So that's the amounts that's left to prepay, so to speak into it. And then if you notice on the right, it's the unearned income related to it. The lights were a separate project and were not factored into this. Uh, um.
Okay, so we've, so Richard, let me just make sure I understand. We've already prepaid 1.3 million for the rental of the Peachtree field into the future of 2041. We can't get a refund on that. We're we've already paid it, right?
No, uh, we, oh, that's the amount that's due to be prepaid, so to speak. If you look at the charts, it shows the years at the bottom there. You see how that adds up to 1.3 million dollars? Those are, that's how much we pay each year.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I just wanted clarification on that. I appreciate it.
Sure.
And
No, no questions on the report.
Can I ask a question? I'm I'm a little confused. When you say prepaid amounts, I thought this, I don't recall that. I thought this was a land swap. And I don't remember that we outlaid cash for use of that field. I thought we balanced the the trade because in Georgia law, they had to be equal. One government can't give another government something else. So I thought all these numbers were based on making it equal.
Correct, yes.
So there's no cash going to the DeKalb County School System. Okay, thank you, because I would have been even more confused. This was based on evaluation. The land at the middle school was worth less than the land. Who, am I the only one besides John that was here for this? I was the only one. Lord help us.
So it sounds like we prepaid it, though. I mean, in the value.
Right, we, so the land at Austin was more valuable than the land at Peachtree. And to get them to be equal, we had to figure out a way to balance them and the are using a few. So the baseball fields now belong to the city. That's a part of Brook Run Park. This field was the use of this field after hours was how we made the numbers work. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Thank you all. All right. Next is consent. Um, anybody have any questions, comments? This is an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by Tom. Any questions, discussion? John, you okay? Wait, you can't hear you. You're muted. John, you're muted. Sorry. Okay.
Thank you. I'm just looking at the consent agenda just to make sure
Okay.
that we have, uh, we have talked of most of these in one way or another. So thank you.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously.
Moving to business items, action items. We have a second read, review and consideration of a text amendment to amend chapter 16 to provide streetscape design standard for certain areas of the city Allegra Denora.
I I'd like to make a motion move to approve. I'll second.
Hey, um, a lot. Yeah, I I think that, um, we would like to hear the presentation or I can call the question. Hear the presentation. Okay.
Well, um, so this was before you all two weeks ago. Um, and there were no changes requested during that portion. So nothing's different about the presentation tonight, but just to jog everyone's memory. We're talking about streetscape standards for the larger jet ferry area that would be um, that would come into play if there were large scale redevelopment. Um, and so you can see this triangle on the screen here. Um, sort of around there is a 12 foot site path. And then just to clarify, on the southern side of Mount Vernon, where the residences are, that would be a six foot sidewalk. And here you can see the close ups of the sections of each street. Um, so you can see the the gray indicates the site, the sidewalk and the green indicates the landscape strip. So again, on Mount Vernon Road, all the way to the right, you can see that on the right hand side, the sidewalk is only six feet, while on the left hand side, it's 12 feet. Um, and that is about all I have. But if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I do. I have a few questions. One is that, um, for clarification purposes, these requirements are variable, right? They can go to a developer can go to the zoning board of appeals and appeal requirements within this code. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
So I'll use the Burger King in Georgetown as an example. Our code required them to build up to the street, eliminate a curb cut. They went to the zoning board of appeals, which is a citizen uh, body. And that body said, no, you don't have to. Correct.
That is correct.
Also, in the language, it allows some, um, some oversight or or some flexibility for your department, right? So if there are trees in the way or utility poles or other impossible situations, there is flexibility given to someone who's redeveloping a parcel. And that's not true of just this particular uh, streetscape standards. It's true of all our streetscape standards throughout the city, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, that said, I am concerned that that people don't totally understand what we're trying to do here. Um, overall, I I think this is a good thing. I think there is an assumption amongst many that 12 feet sidewalks might be overkill. But again, when a developer comes, and I hope it will be in my lifetime potentially. I don't want to tell any developer what to do with their property, except make it better. Um, that it will be, um, that they may find that eight feet is all that works or eight feet is is what works, correct? Like, Richard and Allegra, okay. All right. Anybody else have questions?
I just want one quick clarification.
Right.
The the width of the lanes on the street for the cars is not changing with this, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh, Tom?
Yeah, I I also just wanted to make a comment because there's some people that talked about like the timeliness and the public being informed. And so I just want to confirm that this was not anything that has been rushed through or hidden. Uh, this this project was advertised, uh, in the Dunwoody Crier on June 20th, um, prior to the planning commission meeting, which was held on July 9th. Uh, it was presented at the planning commission meeting, uh, discussed and, uh, approved unanimously by the planning commission. Uh, following the planning commission, uh, it was once again advertised in the Crier uh, on July 18th. Uh, and we held a public hearing at the last um, city council meeting, which was August 12th. So there's been several months of advertisement and meetings and opportunities for the public to engage in this project. This isn't something that's been tried to sweep through. Uh, so, um, I believe the public's had an opportunity to engage with this. And I I also just want to talk about, because I agree with some of the comments that were made about the that particular development. Uh, you know, I've lived less than a mile from that location for over 25 years. Um, and for many of those years, that shopping center was vacant. They had one says hardware closed. It sat there for years as an eyesore and an albatross on this side of town. Um, and it also happens to be a gateway into the city of Dunwoody. It's it's a gateway from Sandy Springs into the city of Dunwoody. Um, and I, like many of my neighbors and other residents in that side of town, were thrilled when Sprouts came in a few years ago. Unfortunately, that was not a a long term venture, uh, but but Lito came shortly after that. Uh, unfortunately, with the same results as Sprouts. So, um, you know, I think um, I just a comment to make, you know, why we're doing this, you know, one of the things when I was campaigning, the biggest thing I heard was, um, you know, the city pays a lot of attention to the perimeter in a village, but they don't do anything on the side of town. And, um, and that's the case with this shopping center. Um, if you look at our comprehensive plan, um, there are uh, this is consistent with our comprehensive plan and nearly ever the commercial property in the city has a streetcap plan similar to this already on the books. Uh, we need to get the east side of town up to speed with the rest of the city, and that's what this is doing. And streetscape plans like this, which are walkable, which improve safety and improve the aesthetics and make it far more attractive are proven catalysts for economic development. It's going to attract the type of development the city wants and the type of businesses the city wants uh, into that space, which I think everyone that lives on that side of town would love. I would love to be able to to walk up the street and shop there than have to get in my car and drive all the way over to to this side of town. So, um, you know, there's no promises or guarantees what will happen with this. But I think it's a good tool. Um, and I think it's a smart um, idea for the city. Um, and I and it's something that is much needed uh, for the residents that live on on that part of town.
Uh, Joe?
So just a little history on, um, I I I initiated this section and um, it takes a while to have government happen. And and when you see, um, you know, when plans happen, I looked at like, say, oh, the McDonald's is empty. Oh, what happens if they change or what happens if the whole thing gets redeveloped? I looked in our books and what would they have to do? Because we, you have to remind, uh, if other cities have things called impact fees, we don't. If you look up what impact fees are, um, I believe, uh, Sandy Springs has them. Um, I'm not sure if Brookhaven has them, but it says, okay, if you're a developer or your Mercedes Benz moving in, um, you've got to write the check to the city. And then the city can do what they want to with that money in general terms to build some amenities for the greater public good. So we don't do that here in Dunwoody. Uh, we have low taxes, we're business friendly and 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 we try to have that small government feel. So what do we do? What have we done? Way before I was on council, going back to 2014, I can tell you a reference when off of Vermac, it's called the desert. It's 32 acres there. And they put in 52, um, they put in 52 new homes. City had the developer put in sidewalks. That was in our code. You see the city, the neighborhoods that we all grew up in that were built here in the 70s and 80s, they didn't even put in sidewalks. So that's what we did in our code to say, we want to have a walkable community because our citizens have said that and it's great for the city. So I looked at what would have happened if they redeveloped today the jet ferry and it's it's just like a five foot wide sidewalk and that would be it. So they wouldn't put any streetscape. There wouldn't be any, uh, trees or landscape or buffer. Because right now there's just a curb and you're walking right alongside that. And when I see parents with children and and strollers or the joggers, whatever, it's not very comfortable and it also is a little bit unsafe to have that. So I just wanted to have some type of trigger that said, okay, developer, we're not asking for the city or government and taxpayers to spend anything, although we have spent money on making this plan up, uh, for staff and consulting and and hourly work. But yet it's just to say, let's put it on equal equal terms here, just like, uh, my, uh, peer here, Tom Lambert, so eloquently stated, other parts of the city. So there are examples, i.e., if you just take a right here in Ashford Dunwoody, the new new Publix in front of the racetrack, guess, look at what they put in there. Sidewalks, streetscapes, et cetera. And that was because we had a plan. So there's plenty of examples of that. So again, I just wanted to see something happen. Should it be redeveloped? And and make it nice and walkable. Thank you.
John, do you have anything?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I want reasonable improvement, capital improvement where needed.
You gotta talk a little louder, please.
You can't. I believe that I want capital improvement, reasonable capital improvement where it makes sense to do so. This project is overkill for me. We have 12 foot sidewalks uh, going completely around the triangle property of, uh, Jet Ferry Dunwoody Club north of Mount Vernon, where there's already sidewalks. The sidewalks are already there. But more importantly for me is I am really object to the 12 foot sidewalks on both sides of Jet Ferry. We're talking 24 feet of concrete on both sides of the streets, tearing out the trees that are mature. And then you have the lighting aspects. Can somebody tell me who pays for the lighting bill for the lighting that's also going to be part of this?
I think the businesses, just like they do, but I'm not sure. Richard can tell us.
Yeah, the 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 developer would pay for them. We would inherit the electrical bill.
We would pay the electrical bill. Okay.
Again, I just, I think that's it's overkill. We've, uh, received as a council probably close to 20 emails asking us to defer this item. We understand that there's no hurry for it. We have a subdivision presidents who lobbied their their whole community have asked for this to be deferred for further discussion. I'm, I would be happy to offer a deferral, but there's already a motion on the table. So I will see where that goes. So.
Okay.
Again, I think it's overkill.
Okay. I wouldn't object to a deferral as well, just to give people a chance to understand that this is mostly good. And there are things that can be tweaked, as I'm not mistaken, Richard, during the development process, right? There are things that can be tweaked during the development process if someone were to buy these properties at the same time, for example, correct?
Well, if this passes, they have to follow that.
Right.
When they get into engineering the site, if there are.
Yes. Right. We work around, we work around mailboxes when we put in sidewalks and trees where we can, right? And and utility poles all the time because it's very costly. Okay. All right. So can I guess you can't admit, John can't make an amendment, right? To table?
Call the question, Madam Mayor.
Okay, call the question. All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
Uh, that passes uh, four to three. Do you have everything you need, Sharon?
Madam Mayor, I didn't see who voted. Could you, could we get a roll call? A roll call on that?
A roll call or just let me tell you?
Just please tell me. I just.
Okay, Catherine, you and I voted no. Does that help?
It does. Thank you.
Okay. Sharon has to get ready. Sharon has to get ready. Okay. Never.
Brad? I refuse on who was next.
Sorry, Sharon has to read it. Yeah, so.
The next item, item number eight is a contract amendment with practical design partners for the final design of Happy Hollow sidewalk from Kingsland Court to Pilar Road. Michael Smith.
Good evening. This item was before the council a couple of meetings ago. And what the primary question, I think at the time was, um, what the original proposals were and the change from the 14,000 to the 146,000. So I I call attention to the second page of the memo. We added the, uh, the original scoring for the RFP uh, and practical design partners was the highest rated back in 2021 and also had the lowest cost. At the time, we decide we opted to only move forward with concept because we felt like depending on what the concept was, it could change what the final design cost would be. So that was the $14,000 original contract was just for the concept design, which has been publicly presented and the councils discussed it. And so now that we know what the final design goal is, uh, they they adjusted their fee. And that's what the, uh, proposed contract amendment is for.
Does anybody have questions? Yeah, Stacy.
I just have one small ask. Um, when you come back to us with the final, with the design and everything, because we've really learned that it's not just a sidewalk project, it's a stormwater project, and this involves a lot of stormwater. So when you do your presentation to us, if we could just highlight what we're doing with stormwater in this project.
And and this would be a good one to remember to bill it as storm. Like, we need to, Eric, we need to stop calling the. And, and this would be a good one to remember to bill it as storm, like we need to, Eric, we need to stop calling these just sidewalks. I know this is from way back when. But this is, these projects are really most, many of these projects are mostly stormwater. So we should correctly advertise.
Right. And one of the, one of the main reasons we are recommending moving forward with this project now is to address some existing stormwater issues at the south end. Before we pave the road in, I think, twenty twenty seven.
Right. Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Move to proof.
Move by Stacy, second by Rob. Was that you? Second by Rob. We'll try again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, Sharon.
Item number nine is a contract amendment with NV five for preliminary and final design of Mount Vernon corridor improvements. Michelle Hoppers.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm presenting the Mount Vernon Road, Vermont uh Road to Mount Vernon Place um design contract amendment. So um, this project was presented to council at the retreat earlier this year as part of the ten year capital plan. You can see um that the um project is highlighted in orange here. Um, as part of the Trail Master Plan map, um a side path is planned along the north side of Mount Vernon Road. This section of Mount Vernon will connect with the Mount Vernon at Tilly Mill project that is currently in right away acquisition. And will also connect with the Mount Vernon Road um from Dunwoody Village to Vermac Road. Um, that project is um currently being um proposed in our twenty twenty five budget for design. So this um slide shows the project history. The project was put on um hold in twenty twenty two with the completion of the Trail Master Plan. Um, in twenty twenty three, the project limits were extended from Corners Drive to Vermac Road. Um, the extension was presented to council in January of twenty twenty four um with the contract amendment for NV five. So here you can see what the current concept is. Um, the concept shows Corners Drive to Mount Vernon Place. Um, it's a twelve foot um shared use path on the north side with some left turn lanes at certain intersections based off of traffic data. Um, we did remove the westbound um bike lane um as the feedback that we got from council in January. Um, and we did retain the eastbound bike lanes. Um, and that does align with the Mount Vernon at Tilly Mill Road. So this was um the concept that shows the extension to Vermac um Road. This was what was presented um as part of. Um, council's feedback, they also asked us to go back to the um additional property owners that would be affected by the extension. So we did reach out and we presented this concept to um the four affected property owners. Um, as of the four affected, um, one owner was in support. One owner was opposed and one owner was neutral and one was non-responsive. So it's kind of across the board. So um the contract amendment would increase the contract to one hundred and thirty seven thousand, one hundred and seventy, which would be a thirty two thousand dollar. Roughly thirty three thousand dollar increase. Um, and this does include a ten percent contingency for designing. So I can answer any questions?
Questions? Anybody?
Uh, and Michelle, on this, that right there, that section, what's that road that has, if I'm going. I'm on the south, south, uh which way is that direction?
It's Corners right there.
That's, is that Corners Drive? Yeah.
So.
Are we doing anything different than what is today from a motorist perspective on that um approach into that? Cause that's a right only, right? It's not a.
It's still going to be a right only. And you can see a little bit right here where we actually made it a tree right only. Um, and we put, we're going to put in a little raised median to kind of delineate that space. So you'll get into that right turn lane. And then you can only take a right in.
Mm-hmm.
And there will not be a right out.
Okay, all right.
I just want to make sure that I'm looking at this right. The orange is on the north side of Mount Vernon?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that's one of, one of our fun streets when it crosses Mount Vernon, it's no longer Vermac, which is why I'm confused.
Yeah, I start, yes.
Okay, okay, so.
Yes.
Man has, okay, so I was just making sure. I was like, wait, wait. That's one of our fu- fun roads. Okay, perfect. Just.
Yes.
Anybody else? John, you have a question?
Yeah, I'll speak up. Uh, Michelle, thank you for mentioning the retreat. If I remember the retreat conversations we had, we were talking about paths. And uh I know that we're going to do Ashford Dunwoody, we're going to focus on that and slow down the others. So these topics keep coming forward. Again, this is single family homes, twelve feet of concrete. Um, I'm against that. Can you tell me about the lighting? How is the lighting going to work and who pays for it? And will these be lit in front of the people's homes?
Um, so I believe that these will have um a lighting component um as part of it also. Um, just like all of our trail um, our shared use paths do. Um, the spacing, we'll have to like figure that out during design. Um, and like how far apart they will be um. As part of the design process. Right now, this is concept and we're asking for additional funds so that we can start the preliminary phase. And go through the design process.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? So I was in the city of Decatur Saturday. And one thing I noticed is is that their trails or paths or sidewalks vary in size. There are places where there's a psych, what do you call the cycle?
The cycle track.
Cycle track and a sidewalk.
Yes.
There are places where there's one straight piece of concrete um where there's, it's labeled for cycling. But it's also clearly has to be used by pedestrians because that's the issue, that's the only thing that's there. Um, and I continue to muse that we don't need one single standard for all this. And I am uncomfortable with declaring that this is going to be twelve feet wide. All the way down Mount Vernon. And is that what we're saying or will we? So when you bring us something back, will there be, go ahead.
So we, when we talk about twelve feet, it's a typical. So typically that is what our aim is for. Um, but as we know, um utilities, pools, um things that are in the ground, um those will kind of sometimes have to dictate that we. Adjust that typical um on a, like a case by case basis at like point location. So. For the majority of the, the corridor, that is what our aim is, is for twelve feet.
And this stage, you will be bringing back to council, what's the next product that we see again, when we, when we see this project again, you will be showing us what?
I believe it's a construction, it's a construction contract.
Okay. No, design?
No, this is the design.
But, but we, we see the design before you go to a construction contract? Will city council see the design? No?
Typically, no. Yes. So we would present the concept to you and this is what we've done. Um, so this is what we would move forward with through design, the preliminary design phase. And then we would uh when we're ready um to advertise it, we have a contractor selected, we would bring that construction agreement to council.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, ma'am, ma'am.
Yeah.
Um, just a history of this uh segment of Mount Vernon. Tilly Mill and Mount Vernon, the intersection that we're in Splot, uh that we're going to be fixing to start construction on soon. It, it's, it's this timeline of when concept plans are presented to count, you know, it's just having the understanding of the history. Of what it takes to build, right? And who's on council even when these things get moving through the cycle. So. If we peel back the onion on the process of a twelve foot wide multi-use path on Mount Vernon on the north side. The first time it got to council was presenting the concept plan for approval for the Tilly Mill, Mount Vernon intersection. And that was probably three years ago because I know at least two of the members on council weren't here and I was. Uh, but, but I know it was Jim Reitager and Pam Talmadge at that time and we had approved unanimously. The council at that time, we can pull up records to approve that concept plan and then it included twelve foot wide multi-use path on the north side. Um, and on your project timelines slide, you'll see in twenty twenty one, the preferred concept was prevented city council. And again, I'm not sure who was on council here in twenty twenty one when this was presented, but it was also a unanimous vote, seven oh. And in that concept, it ended at Corners Drive on the north side and it did have a twelve foot wide multi-use path. So the difference now to the, and then, and we real, but if we pull back the meeting minutes from our. Council retreat in May of this year, um in March of this year. We, we asked for a consensus of council to say, what was our priority of a trail? And we said, okay, perimeter is the Ashford Dunwoody, but I'm pretty sure we had said Mount Vernon was the, the priority. And, and then the, the facility design does change. So if you look at the path foundation master plan. It's called context sensitive because I learned this years ago. It's like not, it's not a one size fits all, right? And sometimes you separate bicyclists and pedestrians. Sometimes they're going the same direction of traffic, sometimes they're going opposite, right? So if you look at the concept plan, it changes from a, a side path on the north side to a one-way cycle track when it gets to the village. And so there's, it's, it changes the facility design there, right? So. I just want to make sure people kind of understand what has been said over the fa- past few years of what we've got to be here and, and, and what happens next in the process and. And that by the end of next year, potentially, we will have a twelve foot wide multi-use path on the north side of Mount Vernon from Jet Ferry to Mount Vernon Place. As part of the Mount Vernon Tilly Mill Intersection Project. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. John, did you, no, you've already said. Uh, I believe this is an action item and this time I don't think we have a motion.
Move to proof.
Move by. Who was it? Tom?
Second.
Second by Rob. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
What'd you say? Oh, nay, right. Two, me and John. John and I.
Thank you.
Item number ten is approval of EEOC conciliation agreement regarding number four ten dash twenty twenty one dash zero zero five six five, city attorney.
Move to proof.
Second. No. Move by Stacy. Oops, I'm sorry. Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay, John. Okay. Did you get that, Sharon? Um, thank you. Now I can bring up Michael Smith because Sharon doesn't have to read these. Um, okay. I think we lost Michael. So we'll come back. Richard, if you'd like to, if you want to come and someone will go find Michael. Michael gets to go last now, but you'll go next.
Sounds good.
I don't think we need to do anything to change the order of the agenda, right? Here comes Michael. Right.
Okay, if you recall back in the spring, um, the, we got an additional six hundred thousand in L-MIG. From the state and at the time, the decision was made to apply that to paving and then just set aside the money we had had. Budgeted for paving and splashed uh for that same amount. Um, and so the proposal tonight is to add some of that money back for paving on Perimeter Center Parkway. The segment between Perimeter Center West and Hammond. Um, the, the perimeter CID came to us, um, you know, a couple of months ago and said, hey, would you consider moving this paving up based on the. Condition of the street. Um, and our current paving plan, it's, it was planned for twenty twenty six. A lot of that had to do with the timing of High Street. At the time we put that plan together, it was anticipated that phase two, they were going to roll right into phase two of High Street. And we would wait and by twenty twenty six, it would mostly be completed and then we would pave. Uh, but that, it looks like now from what we understand, you know, they're not going to move forward with phase two right now. And so. You know, we can wait till twenty twenty six, but um, you know, there's a chance they start construction about the same time we pave the road and. So we, we didn't think, we thought it was a, a good idea to look at moving it up. Uh, if you look at the condition of the road, uh we're paving Perimeter Center West this year. The reds and yellows are the worst. Worst conditions and you know, Perimeter Center Parkway, the part we're talking about is not much different than Perimeter Center West from a condition standpoint. Uh, we've had, we have been making repairs out there, um potholes and things. Um, and so condition wise, it makes sense to go ahead and do it and. The, the budget uh for this, the top line is what's already been approved in the paving contract and we've broken down. The city's contribution, the CID's contribution and then the L-MIG. Um, the CID is, is contributing to removing the old concrete crosswalks that are cracked and. Can be a trip hazard and they've got a new standard now with the red uh painted crosswalks. And so they've. They'll be talking to their board on Wednesday about funding. The removal of the cross, the two crosswalks on Perimeter Center Parkway and replacement with the, the red crosswalk. So. Top line is current contract and then the proposed additions. Uh, the CID would pay for the crosswalks, the city would pay for the paving, that's the three hundred and seventy one thousand, five fifty two. Um, and so with the CID's contribution and the cities that we show the adjusted contract amount of. Just over four point four million and we are uh adding a little contingency for that. So. Our recommendation, and then there will be a little under two hundred thousand left in the paving budget after this. Um, so we're recommending to go ahead and move that up to, to twenty twenty four while we're doing the other streets in the area.
Questions? Anybody? Stacy?
Do we, are, how sure are we that the PCID board is going to vote to reimburse us?
I, I'm fairly confident, but um, you know, if they don't. Uh, then we would just leave those crosswalks in. It would not, that would not be the best scenario, but. We could still pave the road even if they don't remove the crosswalks.
The thing is, is that if they don't remove the crosswalks, it seems to me that we ought to wait until they're ready. Either we have the money to do the crosswalks or they're ready to do the crosswalks. And so perhaps the message to PCID could be that the council will move ahead with paving the segment if they're ready to redo the crosswalks. If they're not ready to redo the crosswalks, we just pave something else or save the money for next year to pave.
I can pass that message on.
Does that work for y'all? Okay, and by the time we vote on this, you'll know. Because we're, this is not a vote, this is not. So presuming he, John, did you have a question?
Yeah, when you have, when you finish your comments, I'm.
Okay, I was just going to ask if it could be consent, but go ahead.
Michael, can you go back to the uh street listing? I just want to verify two things. Just go back a slide.
This one or?
Go one more, right there. So we are adding Perimeter Center West and not removing any other streets, correct?
We're, we're adding Perimeter Center Parkway.
All right, I'm sorry, Perimeter Center Parkway, but all the other streets in green are continuing to be done, correct?
Correct.
We're, can you go to the next slide?
Let me just add to that. There's a little bit of question about how far south we'll be able to go on Ashford Dunwoody because. GDOT's contractor is still down there. And so we're, we're going to work through that with GDOT, but there, there's a chance we may not pave all the way to the end of Ashford Dunwoody.
Okay, and then just, thank you. Next slide, if you could. Now take a look at that. You've mentioned the, you still have two hundred thousand dollars for paving. Uh, is there anything on this map that might be in red or yellow that would make sense? I'm looking at that Hammond red stripe. There near the Marta. Does there, is there anything additional that could be added for that two hundred thousand that would add value?
Uh, the only, uh, the Hammond thing I think is probably, there must, there's probably a. Pothole or, you know, some small, small area out there that's driving that number. I don't think that that's really. Representative of all the pavement there, but we could look at whether there's an area that needs to be patched that would. Would keep that score from being so low. The only other thing I would say is uh south of Springwood Connector.
Right.
Um, there, there's some red there, like between Springwood Connector and the bridge over two eighty five would be the only other place.
Well, you understand my gist. You, you're on it. Basically, we have a little money, we got the machinery there. If it makes sense to add in. If it makes sense to add in, you know, a couple hundred feet where it's now red, where we can let, you know, raise the score and put it off for a year or two, just I'd like to do that as well. If it makes sense when it comes back to us. I'd be happy to spend that two hundred thousand because it sounds like our paving is going well otherwise.
Okay, we can look at that and.
Just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. So we shall see this again, potentially, just so you can give us an update. We'll just keep it as a business item.
Okay.
I think.
I would say if PCID Board approves, I'm fine with content.
Yeah, well, we want to know if, yeah, just we want to know how to spend the extra two hundred thousand. It's fine either way. Thank you. Thank you.
And now we have Richard.
Good evening. So here to present the second quarter budget amendments for twenty twenty four. There's just a handful of them. So a couple in the general fund. First is a a slight decrease decreased property tax revenue in the twenty twenty four budget that we put together. We had a four percent increase factored in in the digest. The digest that we received from the cab actually had a three point four percent increase. So that's gonna be about a hundred and thirty six, an estimated a hundred and thirty six thousand dollar decrease in property tax revenue related to that. There is a slight offset within the community development. So the cop plan and the code rewrite. We had originally budgeted in twenty twenty four for five hundred thousand dollars related to that project, based on the most recent timeline that we got. Probably spend about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year in twenty twenty four. So we're gonna adjust the budget down by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we will make sure to include the remaining five hundred thousand dollars as carryover into the twenty twenty five budget. So the project will have a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar total budget crossing twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. Two other adjustments within the grant fund, we received four hundred and thirty nine thousand five hundred dollars from GDOT for the Safety Action Plan. We actually did receive that check, so we're gonna recognize that as revenue within the grant fund. And we have some projects lined up to spend those funds. And then lastly, within the Capital Project Fund, we're closing out the Austin Elementary Demo Project, twenty L. And we are reclassing that money approximately a hundred ninety two thousand dollars to the Waterford Park Improvements Project to fund a couple of projects, the playground and related concrete with that goes with the playground and to resurface the tennis courts there. So those are the adjustments that we have for the second quarter. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have questions? Tom?
Yeah, Richard, looking at the 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 budget adjustment, the spreadsheet that was in there. Could you just explain? I know the 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 tax revenues were down, but other revenues were in fact up. And look, looking at the the total revenues, it's showing the adjusted budget to be actually roughly two point four million dollars above what was budgeted. Is that a matter of because this is a mid-year when those are collected? Or or does that mean that those are those other revenues are ahead of budget and?
So that's the budget for the full year. So that's our best estimate available information right now as to where we think we'll finish the end of the year. Yes.
Okay, so even though those property taxes are down, our our total revenues are still projected to be above what was budgeted?
That we're hoping, yes.
Okay.
So that is the plan right now. Yes.
All right, thank you.
John, do you have anything? Okay. All right, is this okay for consent? All right, thank you. Public comments? Are there cards? Joe, you can start walking up. I think you're it. I don't think I have any other new cards.
Hi, I I took a bunch of notes over this embarrassing meeting tonight. I'll go through some of them. First of all, I saw y'all kind of patting yourselves on the back about your finances and the budget and transparency tonight. But once again, the city has a open checkbook online so that everybody can see where the money is going. And once again, this year, you've gone more than thirty days without a single entry in there. So residents have no clue. You see how confused residents are and wondering where our money goes, but the city can't even keep its word with an open checkbook. Bravo to you on that. I saw on the consent agenda, very good that you approved the backup and recovery for data and such with the city with your emails and documents. I'm glad you did that because as you know, the city is demonstrating its inability to keep and maintain records, simple ones. Like I told you at the last meeting that I still hadn't received fourteen emails that I had done an open records request twice. And I still have never received them. So I don't know if a backup and recovery is gonna help because it still has to do with some people's morals and ethics and their intelligence and ability to fix things in our city. So I don't know if the backup and recovery is gonna work for that. Likewise, Councilman Joe Secunder keeps soliciting people online to send him direct messages through Facebook and perhaps Twitter. Those are not captured by the new software that you're spending money on backup and recovery. He should be counseled and reminded that that's not appropriate for a city council member to be doing city business through Facebook Messenger. Don't delete anything on there, Joe, because I'm asking for more of your documents. It's unacceptable and inappropriate, and you should be scolded for that. Not okay. You know better, but you do it anyways, and it's not a good look for the city or for you, Joe. You won't even look me in the face. That's what I figured. All right. Also, let's see here. The EEOC item that y'all approved tonight, Bravo. But I'm not sure why it took y'all so long to do that and why y'all just continually fight our police officers, fight transparency in the city, fight judges, fight everything that just makes it more difficult for people in this city. It's it's a shame. You know, our city's invocation asks for counsel to be guided by wisdom and our deliberations. I I don't think y'all demonstrate that. I don't, I don't think y'all are listening to the invocation. It's quite a shame. I have a few seconds left to reminder. I don't know if y'all have been getting updates from your hired law firm. But there's a lot more depositions coming up in my lawsuit against the city. Somehow Sharon Lowry is still playing cat and mouse and we can't get her to commit to something. But imagine if you told every person in the city that they owed two dollars for your stupidity mistakes and transparency fighting, that's what it would be. Y'all are in the hole for about a hundred grand. Thank you.
Anyone else? City manager comments? Council comments?
Want to let everybody know the Dunwoodie Preservation Trust is having their annual Farm to Table dinner, and tickets just went on sale today. It's outdoors under the star. It's a beautiful event at the Donaldson Bannister Farm. It's there's, it's only one night. The last few night years have been two nights, but it's just one night. It's Saturday, September first, six PM to nine thirty PM. It's September twenty first. Okay, thanks. All right. Yeah, but anyway, it's a beautiful night. Support Dunwoodie Preservation Trust, they're excellent community partner there, and it's just a lovely evening. Invite your friends and family. The tickets will sell out soon. They just went on sale today. Thank you.
Else? Motion to adjourn.
Uh, John?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Turn my head side. Go ahead.
I just would like to thank Eric Linton for providing me or the staff for providing me the documentation I requested regarding the Peachtree Charter Middle School Field Turf quotes. I guess I was disappointed that they weren't a real RFP. It was a back of the napkin type quote. One came under a million and one came over just over a million. So thank you for those, that information. I understand based on emails that we're gonna be discussing capital improvements at the budget meetings in September. And hopefully we can find a way to move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, a motion to adjourn, please.
Move to adjourn.
This is not, uh, move by Tom.
Second.
By Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.